Good evening. It's seven o'clock, so we will get started. My name is Anupam Chikse. Welcome to the May 13th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education for Plymouth Canton Community Schools. It is great to see my colleagues and district staff virtually. And if you're watching the live stream, thank you for joining us. Before we get started, I want to remind the public that if anyone would like to share a citizen comment, please fill out the form online that is available on the website. Please type in your comments to the form and they will be read out loud by the board members. And we will adhere to the three-minute time limit for each citizen's comment. With that, I would like to have my board colleagues introduce themselves in alphabetical order.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kate Borninski, and I wanted to first of all, thank anyone who is watching us. Thank you for watching. And also, I wanted to just express to the community that I hope that everyone is safe and healthy and taking care of themselves. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Doug Brooks. Thanks for joining our meeting tonight. Patrick. Next is Patrick, Member Kehoe.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Member Lozarowits.
Hi, good evening. It's John Lozarts. Thank you for watching us on Zoom, and I wish everyone well.
Member McCoyn.
Hi, Patty McCoyn. Thanks for watching us, and it's a little bit late, but thank you to all the teachers out there and school staff. Teacher Appreciation Week was last week, so thank you so much for all you do for our students.
And finally, Members Sedu.
Present. And Member Savage is absent. Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff?
Yes, good evening and welcome. Thank you for everyone that has come out tonight to join us for our meeting. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for taking our minutes. I also want to introduce with tears in my eyes and a smile on my face, Mr. Charlie Jones, the man behind the scenes. If you've noticed on today's agenda, we are asking you to accept Charlie's retirement. He has been a teacher, a media specialist in our district for 42 years. And he also has been just a gem as a part of our board meetings, as he tapes our meetings, so that people that are not able to be here can see these meetings. For 19 years, he's been taping these meetings. I plan to beg him to continue taping these meetings after he is retired as a teacher, but I just want to acknowledge him and thank him this evening. I'd like to have the remaining members of my staff introduce themselves. Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, and welcome to everybody watching the live stream.
Hi, I'm W. Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Human Resources. Welcome.
Good evening, Kurt Tiscus, Executive Director of Student Services. Thanks for joining us today.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. Thanks to everybody watching and everybody that's here with us.
Good evening, Heather Fitchpatrick, President, Education Association. Thanks for joining us this evening.
All right, we have everyone. Great. Now, would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm always amazed that when they do the synchronized singing or music on TV, it just plays so well, but here it's a little delayed. All right, so we will get started with our first item on the agenda. I'm looking for a motion for the adoption of the Agenda approval of the Consent Agenda, action item number 20-05-51.
Member McCoyn.
I, Madam President, I would like to make a motion to adopt the Agenda item, I mean Consent Agenda and adoption of Agenda and approval of Consent Agenda, action item 2005-51.
Thank you. Member Brooks.
I second that.
Thank you. Motion was made by Member McCoyn, seconded by Member Brooks. Ms. McCoyn, or I'm sorry, Ms. Merritt, would you please walk us through the Consent Agenda?
Yes, thank you. This evening, your Consent Agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we have retirements for your consideration as well as tenure recommendations. We also have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on April the 14th. The resolution to temporarily suspend board policies was a part of our minutes, and we attached that separately as a part of this resolution. The first reading of Policies 1422.01, that's a drug-free workplace, Policy 2628, stay aid incentives, and Policy 3122.01-4122.01, drug-free workplace. Also, we have the final reading of Policy 8450.01, COVID-19 mitigation, self-reporting, leaves of absence for your consideration.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Member Borninski.
I just wanted to congratulate all the people from the district who are retiring, and I especially wanted to say thank you to Dr. Burt, Mrs. Dean, Mrs. Hanchett, Mr. Jones, and Madame Springglass. All of them have touched my family in some way or another, so thank you very much.
Thank you for those kind words. Any other members? Okay, hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. Member Brooks, would you please read out the names?
Member Borninski.
Yes.
Member Brooks, yes. Member Kehoe.
Yes.
Member Lozawit, or it's, excuse me.
Yes.
Member McCoyn.
Yes.
And Member Sedu.
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes 6-0 for the adoption of the Agenda approval of the Consent Agenda, action item number 20-05-51.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I would like to celebrate the retirements of the following staff members from our school district and congratulate them and thank them for their service to our students, families, and the staff they worked with. Dr. James Burt, 48 years, congratulations. Jill Dean, 21 years of service. Robert DeBier, 36 years of service. Karen Hatchett, 19 years of service. Frida Hastings, 41 years of service. Charlie Jones, 44 years of service. Ronald Perkins, 16 years of service. And Kay Springglass, 34 years of service. So thank you very much. We would like to wish you well, and we know you will enjoy every moment of your retirement. At this time, I would like to share with you a tenure recommendation. The tenure recommendation is for a classroom teacher at Halsing School. Her name is Julie Todd, and she has completed five successful years of teaching. And this is what Jennifer Chambers, the principal of Halsing School, would like to share about Julie Todd. Julie Todd is a dynamic teacher. She is consistent in meeting the needs of her families. She leads her class through the lens of what is best for kids. Families are thrilled to have her as their child teacher. She serves on our schools' PBIS and Marches Reading Month committees. She works well with all staff. She is a true asset to the Halsing community. So congratulations, Julie Todd, on receiving tenure here in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now moving on to Part B of our agenda, Board Committee Reports and Action Items, starting with the President's Report. I'd like to start by expressing my deepest condolences to the families that have been impacted by COVID-19. It seems that every week we're finding more friends and family members that have been hit hard by this pandemic. So my heart goes out to the families. Please continue to stay safe and take precautions. I'd like to, as Member Borninski mentioned, Teacher Appreciation Day, Week. I'd like to wish all of the teachers a belated Teacher Appreciation Week. I think we all agree that every day is Teacher Appreciation Day. And we want to thank all the educators, parents, guardians, caretakers, who are helping with ensuring that all of our students are engaging in meaningful learning experiences during these challenging times. I, Ms., or Member Borninski, and I had the opportunity to volunteer at a couple of the sites during the food distribution. I want to acknowledge all the staff for their continued efforts in distributing about 30,000 meals every week. And the process, the the cast members, as I call it, they've orchestrated a beautiful process that is very efficient, and everyone works hard together to help these families. And I applaud the extra steps that everyone takes to make sure that everyone is safe and everyone has the proper protection gear. I was really amazed with the efficiency and the coordination. So thank you to member, I'm sorry, Ms. Merritt, and the entire team and the board members that were able to volunteer, as well as some of the other community members. So this is a great thing that we can do to support our families. Speaking of protective gear, I would like to thank some of the board members that have contributed masks and either in finding masks and donating them or making them to keep our community safe. A few weeks ago, I was able to coordinate getting 100 masks made by Rachna Chandra for our PCCS staff. So I hand-delivered those masks. They're the handmade reusable ones. I hand-delivered them to Ms. Merritt this past week. And just again, we'll continue to get as many as possible. So it's really nice that everyone's stepping up to contribute to this time where people need masks and protective gear. I also want to mention one of my colleagues at my work, Andy Henry, who was able to use his 3D printer to create the Shields face masks for the extra protection that some of our staff need. So thank you to everybody that continues to give, to volunteer, to donate, to make sure that our communities are safe and healthy and strong. I also want to mention that I had the opportunity to enjoy in the virtual 5K walk-run. Did any other board member get an opportunity to do that? Yes, thank you. Member Kehoe, and I think this is one of the things that we look forward to every year. And I want to say thank you to the amazing students that organized this event and made it engaging and relevant for the entire week. And I know they had to be a tough task. They created videos, they had social media tweets, everything, every day going. And it was great to see some of my neighbors running around with the green SJK5 t-shirts. So great program every year that is student-led, and I appreciate all that they do. Do any of the board members want to share their experiences?
Yes, so on the SJ5K, yeah, it was a great, great event. You know, I also participate through the the local chapter of the Odd Fellows, and we were a lead sponsor for the SJ5K this year, and we were very happy to contribute, as well as to have about 20 of our members participate in the same process. I attempted to do the multi-day process. I managed to do three days of a 5K walk, but then got trapped in work stuff and missed the others. I did round it out with with two more days on the weekend, so, but I didn't get the full seven-day 5K. But it was a fantastic event, great coordination and collaboration from the students. You know, really, really impressive about how they've come together for the community and supported their fellow students and families through very challenging times and really demonstrated fantastic leadership. It's a testament to the to the great kids that our community has raised and the education that we provided for them.
Absolutely. You got your 5K, whether it took three days or five days.
I did three 5Ks.
Oh, you did three 5Ks. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I was gonna do seven, I was gonna do seven 5Ks.
Wow, overachiever. Okay, I did two 5Ks over the course of the week. But again, yeah, well said with regard to the student-led program and everything that they do for our community. I'd also like to acknowledge Jay Upstic, who shared a press release on Saturday announcing the winners and honorees for the virtual showcase. It was a Chairman's Award, which is the highest honor given to the First Robotics Competition Season, recognizing the team that best represents a model for other teams to emulate and best embodies the purpose and goals of the First Robotics Program. And that was Canton High School Team 862. So congratulations to the students and Jay for their ongoing success with the robotics program. Another thing I want to mention during my President's Report is there's a parent feedback. I want to make sure all the parents out there, parents, guardians, are able to get that survey, whether it came in your email or you find it on the website. It is called a Home Learning Family Check-In Survey. We really value your input and your feedback with regard to your learning experiences with the emergency remote learning that has taken place. So please take a few minutes to fill out the survey and share your experience. And the survey will be open for another week. And that is it for my President's Report. Next, we're moving on to Item Two for Committee Reports, starting with the Student Performance and Achievement Committee. We met this past Wednesday, and we had great discussion, a very active team. We went through the refund process for all the field trips that had to be canceled for this summer, even moving into fall. And we wanted to make sure that our families were getting the refunds as needed through the different companies that we have contracted with. So I appreciate the district that's working hard to make sure that the families get the money refunded in a timely manner. We also went through a thorough review of the new math elementary resources, and the team did a great job of showcasing what was recommended for purchase and why, and having us go through a couple of the items that they chose with regard to a lesson. We also went through the continuity of learning plan, which you'll get a chance to see later on today. Beth is going to give you a deeper dive into that, so I'll hold off on that. And Beth, did we cover anything else? Did I miss anything else from the agenda?
I think those were the primary ones. So, yeah, I love, well, we also talked a little bit about summer school, and we'll be talking about that as we move forward as well. So we're looking at first layer of virtual summer school, and then layering on top of that, anything that happens as we move forward and get a little more information about whether we can or cannot come back together and stuff. But the first wave will be a virtual summer school programming.
Great, thank you. All right, we're moving up to Item Three, Policy Committee, with Member McCoyn.
Yes, we met virtually at the end of April. It was it was a good meeting. It's a little different of an environment for us as opposed to sitting around a table and talking and marking up our things as we go, but we got through it. And so we spent a lot of time on the policies you see today, and especially the the one on COVID-19, because of course, that's a new policy to address the concerns that we have right now. And our next meeting is going to be also virtual, and it will be on May 26 at 5:30. So the link and the information will be sent out later, so people are free to join us online for it.
Thank you for that update. Next up is Finance and Operations Committee, Member Kehoe.
Thank you. We had two Finance and Operations meetings since we last met as a school board, once on April 23rd, once on May 7th. Both of those meetings were predominantly about the budget process, which we'll hear this evening in the very challenging conditions that we have existing in our state with respect to educational funding. We also reviewed a number of the purchase recommendations and other things, some of which you'll see this evening as well. Our next meeting is Thursday, May 21st at 5:00 PM. We have had some good community participation in those in those FNO meetings, and I encourage the community to also attend virtually on May 21st as well.
Thank you for that update. Next up is the Educational Excellence Foundation. Heather Fitchpatrick, do you have an update for us?
I do, thank you. In an effort to balance our operating budget for the remainder of the year, the EEF Board voted to furlough our Executive Director Gretchen Ward for the period May 1st to July 31st. This was a joint decision between the Board and Gretchen, and it allows the foundation to preserve cash in the short term and for Gretchen to have dedicated time to actively support her PCCS 4th and 6th graders as they transition to online learning. During this time, we will still be conducting limited business and will be responsive to the needs and requests from PCCS. Should you need anything during Gretchen's absence, please reach out to eef@pccsk12.com or contact our Chair, Mike Ritter, at mike@m y s b e a dot com. As PCCS prepares for the 2021 school year, the EEF is looking forward to being responsive to the needs of our PCCS community. Some of these needs can be met with our Level the Learning Field Fund, which we believe that support Plymouth Canton Community School students with nutrition, clothing, and other needs. We are able to help level the learning field so that all students will come to school ready to learn. There was a need for these funds pre-COVID-19, and we know that when school resumes, the need will be greater than ever. To learn more about these funds or to make a donation, visit eefforkids.org and click on Level the Learning Field. And then finally, we have two exciting things that EEF has been able to partner with the district this spring. First off, EEF donated $500 to pay for protective mask supplies used by many teachers for the lunch pickups that we do on Wednesdays. And then lastly, the two banners congratulating the seniors, which are now hanging on the fences on both sides of the corner at Canton Center and Joy Road. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Heather. And again, thank you for everyone that's doing the great work with donating the protective gear. We are moving on to citizens' comments, and I have one that came in. This is a 4th grader, Laurel, and I'm going to read her comment right now. Why I think we should be doing WebEx for school. So we all feel that we need to be learning, but have you thought about how the kids are feeling? There is confusion when the teachers are not explaining when students are doing the assignment, and then they don't know the problems students are having. Since I am on the Student Council, I decided this would be a great time to talk to my fellow Student Council group today and see how we all feel about online school. One other Student Council member felt like we need WebEx, too. Some of my friends are having trouble with the things that they can't figure out how to do. Without the teachers seeing our faces, they do not know what we are stuck on. So I think it would be a great idea to use something where you can see everyone's faces, so we're all on the right track of things. From my personal experience, I think it is extremely hard if you were confused about a topic and your parents couldn't figure it out, and then the video is 27 minutes long. That is a long time to stay focused. I really think a virtual classroom or something would be good to interact and get better learning opportunities. And that is the conclusion of her comment. So I appreciate the student sharing her comments during this time. Nick, do we have any other public comments?
We do not.
No, okay, no other public comments? We will move on to Part D of our agenda, Administrative Reports and Recommendations, starting with the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, and I also would like to applaud our student for providing some feedback on her learning, home learning opportunities. I heard President Sedu talked earlier about the parent survey that has launched this week. I also want you to know that we are also launching a student survey, and that will take place next week. That will be an opportunity for students, grade six through 12, to share with us their feedback on their home learning experience. It is important. We say this process is fluent, fluid and changing. Remember, March 16th, we went home. Our teachers went home, not realizing that they wouldn't see their students again, and we've moved into this remote learning space without a lot of training ahead of time, and so managing, trying to really meet the needs of all students. So it's so important that we do hear the feedback of our youngest learners, so we can continue to improve and get stronger as we work through the end of this school year. I also want to just inform our community, as we're thinking about the end of this school year, a lot of our energy right now has started to move towards planning for next year. What will a safe re-entry look like in the fall for our students? So we have developed a district re-entry task force. The first meeting of that committee will be this week. Really, that, the goal and the charge of that committee is to develop some scenarios for a safe return to school in the fall. If that is full instruction, making sure that we're practicing proper social distancing and regulations were clean to make sure that we're keeping students safe. If that is an online module, if that's what we are required to do because we're not able to return to this environment, or if it's a hybrid of both models, we just want to make sure that we have done our due diligence to make sure that we are prepared. And so I just want the community to know that we are beginning that work. As with all of our committees, we want to make sure that we remain transparent. So we'll have an avenue in which we communicate the updates on the progress of that task force. So we make sure that when we are ready to return for learning, we are doing so in a manner that is safe and is really the environment that is expected out of us as Plymouth Canton Community Schools. I mentioned this, this environment, but I also want to make sure that my communication around seniors, I want to touch on them this evening. I still have been receiving some emails from parents, and I assured you at the last board meeting, we will not forget our seniors. Our high school staff, our teacher leaders, as well as administrators are working on plans to recognize our seniors for these really truly special accomplishments that they, or milestones that they unfortunately are not able to experience in the traditional fashion. So I do believe that there will be some communication coming out shortly as a, as a form of an update to our families from some of the plans that our senior, our high school staff is working on to recognize our seniors for these, these few events. Today, I want to give a few shout-outs. I want to recognize our own PCCS school nurse, Patrice Williams. If you've noticed in this week in the patch, there was an article that came out. It was recognizing examples of genuine love was the topic of the article. So they had an opportunity for people to nominate. The patch did people that are going above and beyond during this pandemic, and our own Patrice Williams was recognized. She's a school nurse with us here in PCCS, as well as a nurse with, I think, Ascension Healthcare. And so she is here with us every single week on the front lines with food delivery, making sure that everybody is safe and healthy. And then she's also out being on the front line, and we appreciate her for all the work that she's doing in the community to help to save lives. I will say every single day that she is here in PCCS. She has truly worked to make a difference in the lives of students. She's approachable. She's compassionate. She does so much without ever looking for any praise in return, so we want to honor her. We're glad to see that the patch honored her, and we appreciate all the work that she's doing for PCCS, as well as in the community. I also want to give a shout-out this evening to our amazing elementary music teachers with a song in their heart. They got together this week and made a virtual connection with our young learners, and I want to share a little piece of a video that they launched with the song and a few dance moves to just remain connected to our students during this time period. So we're going to share a little piece of that video. Thank you for sharing that. But and once again, we just want to thank our elementary music teachers. Music is really the universal language that unites us all, and so there's such power and their ability to come together and inspire our young students by making this virtual connection. We want to thank them for that. There is so much that we have to be excited and proud of in our community. We have developed a, I'm going to say just an educational program that I believe that no one else can compare with PCCS in terms of trying to work to meet every student at their needs, where they are. With that, it makes tonight's conversation around budget a very difficult conversation. We, as Trustee Kehoe has shared, we've been talking for the last few weeks about some disturbing cuts that will more than likely come to our district, to our state aid next school year, and working together to find some reductions as close or far away from the classroom as we can. We've we've talked about just our school community and schools in general as being the cornerstone of any community. We represent stability for our families, and this is a time of such uncertainty. And as we're looking to come together with a budget, we want to be able to present a budget that will, when possible, try to make sure that we can be that stable environment for our community and for our students, because that is what they deserve. So we have some hard decisions to make. We have some conversations this evening to begin that discussion and some further work to do. I am confident, though, that we will get through this, because this pandemic has shown me more than ever that we are PCCS strong, and we will get through any challenge stronger together. So with that, I am going to move then to the next area and turn it back over to our president.
Thank you, Superintendent Merritt. Thanks so much for the update with regard to even getting student feedback, because I think hearing from our students and families is really critical. So I appreciate the district coordinating those efforts to make sure that our students and parents and families' voices are heard. And again, thank you for sharing the video. Beautifully done, and it reminded me of all of the amazing videos that schools are creating with students and staff. I got to see the Liberty staff video that was sent to all of the students at Liberty, because my son goes to Liberty. Beautifully done, really heartfelt. And then just yesterday, I saw the Helsing Minute video that was sent out with how kids are learning in Helsing. Love, love all of this that is coming out from the district that is created by students, created by staff. And this is a great way to help us stay connected and realize that we are a strong community. We are stronger together, and we will get through this. So thank you, Ms. Merritt, for the continued support for all of the schools that continue to do this great work. So we are now moving on to Part D, I'm sorry, D, number two, Finance and Operations. Before we get started with the presentation and discussion, I'd like to have a motion on the table for action item number 20-05-52, Resolution to Approve Wayne Reeser 2020-2021 General Fund Operating Budget, first and final reading. Member Kehoe.
Madam President, I move that we consider the resolution to approve the Wayne Reeser 2020-2021 General Operating Budget, Action Item 20-05-52, first and final reading.
Member Brooks.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Member Kehoe, seconded by a member, Brooks. Debbie or Ms. Merritt, would you like to walk us through the presentation and the discussion?
Yes, I will begin, and Debbie can fill in. Each year, the Board is required by state law to adopt a resolution either in support of or disapproval of the budget for Wayne Reese's General Fund. The final resolution must be presented to Wayne Reese's Board of Education prior to June 1st. We shared a copy of this budget at our Finance and Operations meeting, as well as through your board notes. We've had some questions that came up that we were not able to answer, and so Deputy Superintendent Steve Ezekian from Wayne Reeser has joined us this evening, so that he is here to answer any questions that you may have concerning this budget. As we are, there are still a lot of assumptions that are being made, because there are a lot of unknowns. So they've been very clear that this is a preliminary budget, and as we know more information, they will have an opportunity to make some adjustments there. So Debbie, I don't know if you want to add before we open that up for questions or comments from Mr. Ezekian. No, I'd like to forward my time to Mr. Ezekian. I think he had just a few comments he wanted to make on the Wayne Reeser budget.
Good evening. Thank you for having me with you this evening virtually. I commend all the work that you're doing. As you've talked about, and alluded to already, this, these are unprecedented budget times for all of us in the school community. And even more so, because we are facing operating school in a different way possibly next year, and maybe a more expensive way next year. So there's a lot of unknowns that we're all dealing with in terms of budget process. Our budget process has, in terms of timelines, is kind of dictated by state law. You know, culminating in us submitting our budget to the local school district boards for their review and approval or disapproval, and then going to our Board in June. So we have to be done with our budget process actually in in late March. So we started pretty early to get that done. And and as we were completing our budget process, we all knew that things weren't normal, right? You know, the the pandemic started happening, and the prospect of the economy closing down was on the horizon, but not yet happening yet. So deciding what our budget should be for next year was, and as it still is probably for you, is kind of a shot in the dark. There's a lot of guesses going on. At that time, there weren't numbers that were presented in terms of what they thought the state, the deficits were going to be both for this year and for next year. Now we're getting some preliminary numbers that are pretty scary for this this year and next year. But as we approached our budget process and the requirements we had, we knew that anything that we would put down on paper would be changed pretty quickly once reality of the revenue streams were recognized. In addition, whether we were going to get any federal aid to the state fund. So our administration and Board decided to move ahead with a continuation budget, knowing that the revenue stream would be relooked at again, and possibly the expenditure stream, depending on how drastic the revenue stream was. Our Board is committed, though, not to affect the services of local districts. So they have not put in place any expenditure cuts at this time, because we can sustain the revenue downsizing for a while, because we have a fund balance to do that. But they don't want to go through the process of making service cuts at this point, because that would affect the local districts. So they they've always talked about what those could be, and they're always planning ahead for that, but they didn't want to put that down in an actual budget at this point without real knowledge of what the effect of of all these revenue deficiencies could be for next year and possibly for this year as well. So the budget that's presented is a carryover budget. We have an opening message from our Superintendent Randy Leepa, who recognizes that the prediction of revenues is pretty ungainly at this point, and that we will be making adjustments to our budget once those become known. Are there specific questions I can answer for the Board or Administration?
Let's start with Member Kehoe, and then we'll go to Member Lazarowitz.
Yeah, so Mr. Ezekian, I appreciate you coming here and giving us the feedback, and I apologize for not getting you these questions and writing ahead of time. When I'm looking at the the general fund budget that we have, that you have, it appears that you've got an extraordinarily healthy fund balance of more than 64%, even after your proposed budget. And that budget includes significant salary and benefit increases for your teams. And I think with the the situation that we have going on here in our district and what we're seeing in in the message coming from from Lansing, this just seems like a completely unacceptable budget to be talking about doing big increases in salaries and employee benefits and maintaining a massive fund balance when the when the districts that you serve are being forced to make what is considered to be, in some cases, unconscionable cuts. And then my second question is beyond the general fund, is to understand why there's such a huge fund balance on the Act 18 Fund. And perhaps you can explain both of those situations, why the expenditures versus the fund balance in both of those funds are still so significantly outsized from your actual your actual expenditures.
Sure. Thank you for your question. On the general fund, there's some idiosyncrasies with accounting and ISDs that you don't have in in local school districts. If we were a local school district and reported the way you do, adding our federal programs and our computer service programs that service you, our fund balance would be about 5%. Those are later on in the the budget book. So those aren't combined in our general fund, but our fund balance supports our federal programs and our computer services. So our fund balance would be about 5%. With regard to the salary and benefit increases you noted, those are really due to some programs that were funded through a grant, specifically a career counselor program that Plymouth Canton takes a part of that is no longer grant funded. Our districts really value the service of those career counselors. So our Board decided to pull those functions within our general fund and sustain them, since we do have fund balance in order to continue the services to the local districts. So that's where the the increase in salaries and benefits are, for the most part. There are some other minimal increases because of people moving on steps and other people moving from grants back to the general fund as well. With regard to the Act 18 Fund, I can tell can tell you that we talked about that a lot at the Superintendent's meetings at Wayne Reeser. That's there to protect all of us from a shortfall down the road. You know, if you were around back in the late 90s, Plymouth Canton was probably contributing maybe a million dollars, I'm guessing at that point, to the shortfall in the Act 18 Fund to provide services for your children that were attending center programs in special ed programs in districts across the county. We passed a millage back in 2000. At that time, we expected that millage to sustain the Act 18 Fund, not going into deficit till about 2013, because of a number of reasons, being mostly being that salaries kind of froze for a while in that timeframe. We started building up fund balance, and it's been the mission of the Wayne Reeser Board and the heavy work of a lot of the superintendents in Wayne County to continually review that Act 18 Fund to make sure we don't go into deficit. So prior to actually this pandemic, we were predicting that the expenditure side of the Act 18 Fund would increase significantly, expecting that districts would start providing additional compensation to attract very scarce teachers in the special education programs. And we expected the the fund balance to start dipping. But with this pandemic, I don't know if I can make that prediction again. Having said that, over the years, as we look at our fund balance, our Board asks us to distribute that as much as we can to local districts. Over the past four or five years, we've reimbursed for all your unfunded special education transportation costs out of that fund. That's about a million dollars to Plymouth Canton Schools, and we will, that is in the budget again for next year. Is the is the fund balance high in the Act 18 Fund? I would say yes, it is. And we can constantly look at that, but we look at that with all the superintendents in Wayne County to make sure that we can continue to provide programs and not be in a situation five years down the road or or four years down the road, that we have to come back to districts and charge them for the services for the most disabled kids.
So I appreciate the explanation, and in normal times, I would wholeheartedly agree with your process. But with Wayne Schmidt, the State Senate Chair, talking about 20% cuts that we're going to experience to to student funding, $2,000 per pupil cuts, this is just unacceptable. I can't support this kind of budget with this kind of process. This is money that could be used to cushion the impact of that process for our districts by taking those fund balances and distributing them to our district and other districts like us.
I understand your concern. If we took our general fund balance and distributed that across the county, that would be $14 per student. We are legally unable to distribute the Act 18 money, because that was voted in for special ed purposes, so that would have to go towards special ed costs.
And when we look at the situation that our students are going through right now, I can see that there's going to continue to be a massive increase in need for special ed and supporting those students, especially if we go into a blended learning model. So I would expect to see those kinds of costs go up for us as we have to hire more teachers to support those those students in that process. Again, I just can't support this budget.
Thank you, Member Kehoe. Member Lazarowitz, did you have a question?
Yeah, hi, John Lazarz. I was I was wondering about the budget with the the funds. How can we, how can you justify the pay raise for the difference? You're looking at, what, 6.5 million from last year to 7.2 this year?
And there was no pay raise. Sure, there was no pay raise. As I explained earlier, that increase reflects services that were paid for out of our funded projects fund previously for career counselors that is no longer supported by a grant. But because there's such demand for those services, we're moving them into our general fund. So the number of people being paid our general fund has increased than what we had in the previous year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Yeah, there was actually, there was actually negotiated, there is actually no negotiated pay raise for our staff for the 2021 fiscal year. There was a reopener, a formula reopener, which, given the situation, there is no, there's no pay raise.
So no staff is getting a pay raise whatsoever? It's just a continuation of a program that you guys are doing, correct?
Correct. Okay.
Thank you. Before I go back to Member Kehoe, let me make sure that I give other board members an opportunity to ask questions. Other board members, questions, comments? Okay, we will turn it back over to Member Kehoe.
Sir, I I am not happy with this budget and this process, but I do want to make sure that it is clear that I very much support the work that Reeser does and how the contributions that they make to our our community and to our district. So I think that you guys can go back and rework this budget, and I don't want to have any of my frustrations with the budget process be reflected on the great services that you provide. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions, discussions? Okay, hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote. Member Brooks, would you please read out the names? Member Brooks, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, Member Berninski.
Yes.
Member Brooks? No. Member Kehoe?
No.
Member Lazarowitz?
No.
Member McCoy?
Yes.
Members to do?
Abstain, because I work for Wayne Reeser. All right, votes are in. We have three noes, two yeses, one abstention, and the action item does not pass. All right. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Ezekian, for being here and answering our questions. All right, we are moving on to the 2020-2021 Budget Overview Presentation, part of the agenda. Debbie, are you going to walk us through this one?
Yes, please. Okay, so this is going to be my first of four presentations to the Board of Education. This is the high level where we are today. We'll go through this presentation. We'll have a series of presentations on May 26th with preliminary budget numbers for the 2021 school year. We'll then have a public hearing in June, and then we'll have a final vote on June. I believe it's 23rd is the last board meeting of the year. So if you could move that forward, Nick. So what I'd like to do today is give you some financial information, the results from our audited financial statements as of June 30, 2019. um, as of June 30, 2019. Our current situation in the current year we're in for the year ended 6/30/2020. And then our, an outlook for the 2021 school year. We'll talk a little bit about the impact of COVID-19 in the revised budget process we're currently in the middle of in order to come up with, um, next steps. So our financial update for the financial statements for the period ending June 30, 2019 was, um, as a result of the audit, when the independent auditors came. Um, we ended the year with an operating fund balance of $37.8 million or approximately 22.5% of total general fund expenditures. The year we're currently in, we just did a mid-year budget amendment on February the 11th, 2020, which projected a small, um, a deficit of about $2.3 million to come up with about $35.5 million in ending fund equity or still, um, relatively solid at 19.8%. We are going to do a final amendment for this year in June. And we're going to talk about enhancement millage and, um, the renewal of that countywide enhancement millage a little later. The financial outlook for '21 has a significant impact based on COVID-19. This week on Friday, the consensus revenue estimating conference, CREC, as it's known by, is where the governor's, um, office, the senate fiscal agency and the house fiscal agency all come together to come to consensus of where state finances are, including for us, the school aid fund. Because that cracked this Friday, we'll only have the results through March. We're worried as well as others throughout the state, the state, that that won't have the entire picture of where we're at. Because as you know, we closed effective, um, March 13th. And it really only included then the two weeks of March. The significant impact is going to be the four weeks of April and now, um, including the four weeks of May until things are really hopefully coming back around near the end of the month of May. We'll talk about some other changes in, in our expenditures as well, but that's the, the big one we'll discuss this evening. So this is the, this is the school aid fund. And this is the different pieces of the school aid fund, um, that really come to, um, to pass, uh, to, uh, uh, impact our, um, financial wellbeing. In 1994, the state of Michigan passed Proposal A in which we went from a tax basis for school funding from property taxes from your homes and commercial businesses to reliant on state sales tax and state income tax. Is the majority, um, pieces of what went into the school aid fund to fund Michigan public schools. Again, currently we're funded at $8,111 per full-time equivalent student. And that money comes from this fund. The fund itself, these are the revenue sources that go into that fund in order to fund Michigan public schools. And as you see, sales tax has been decimated because retail sales are non-existent in the state currently. Um, only through either drop, um, shipments or, um, online sales. And the individual income tax was deferred from April the 15th to July the 15th, which means a three-month, you know, um, amount of, um, re- revenue to the state from individual in- income taxes won't occur, um, until a quarter later, which unfortunately is after our year end. But as you know, the state's year end is 9/30 or September 30th, um, three months after our fiscal year end. And so this, this creates what we'll call the COVID-19 impact to all school districts across the state of Michigan. Our process this year included a calendar and assumptions, and we were actually right on target um, for all the different activities that go on to culminate in the budget process. But then COVID-19 occurred and that impact, like I said, to state school aid fund, um, is still being felt and measured. The superintendent and the core team have continued to review a series of scenarios. We've held budget sessions with our administration on both April the 29th and May the 6th. And we're having a trade-offs meeting again, um, tomorrow on May 13th to then consider what kind of budget reductions, cuts and other changes we might make for the following fiscal year. So in our original, next slide, please. So our original budget, we had some assumptions based on revenue. And here's the crux of the problem. Revenue for our district is simply the multiplication of state aid, state foundation allowance amount times our enrollment. And so because currently there is a wide disparity in what we're anticipating would be a decrease in tax revenues to the state of Michigan School Aid Fund that will have a negative impact on what we can infer for next year. We had originally estimated that we would have a decrease of about $300 to $350 per full-time equivalent student. And our current estimates are estimated to be about $500 per full-time equivalent student. We also included some enrollment projections in our numbers. And those enrollment projections were done twofold. One, as a result of our, um, facility needs study, our school boundary study and all the work that we did to come to election day on our bond, um, projects, um, and our, um, new, newest bond election as well as Stanfrod, who does our annual, uh, financial or enrollment projections. In both those, um, they had a very minor or, um, slight reduction in full-time equivalent students. We're still capturing more than we should, but we have the number of births in the area and in the district will be down about 150 FTE, we think. Um, and the original, um, packets that went out for budget purposes had a stable or static or same as last year amount, and we've now indicated it'll be about 150, 50 FTE reduction. Um, we held our grants to fiscal year, um, same levels into the next year as we are in the current year. And again, we're in enhancement millage year five of six. So that, that was in the original, um, explanations and assumptions in the budget process. On the expenditure side, of course, the Michigan Public School Employee Retirement Fund um, is a mandatory amount. All Michigan public schools have to pay into the fund based on the number or percentage of salaries. And so currently we're at a base rate of 27.5. And this may increase as we move into next year, but that rate hasn't been, um, published yet. Um, our hard cap is the health insurance cap on, on which we pay health insurance claims for our, um, our, uh, staff, and that has increased by 2%. We held other insurances for dental vision, um, at their, um, same rates. Um, we kept pop, paper and copy, um, allocations the same. We kept, uh, capital outlay the same. We looked at increases in major contracts. The two ones that we have are custodial and transportation services. We have a textbook budget of about a million dollars annually. And then we looked at staffing, um, uh, at similar or same levels as the prior year, assuming uh, we get about 15 teacher retirements on an annual basis. So that was in the original budget. And so that led us to, um, some changes in our assumptions as we go forward. Next slide. So that's, that gave us, or that product was a revenue stream of about $168.4 million. An expenditure amount of about $185 million, meaning a deficit of almost $16.7 million. That gets us to about a fund equity percentage of about 10.2%, which does comply with current board policy, but of course is not acceptable to anyone um, given, uh, where we want to be as, as far as balancing the budget. One of, one of the big, um, outstanding items is the Federal Cares Act that was just, um, um, voted or, uh, signed in, as an executive order, uh, last week. Our portion, Plymouth Canton Community Schools, um, our portion is $797, uh, $797,000. Um, and that is subject to proportional share. So we will have to share that with some of our, um, private schools in the area because it's based on Title I. And the title work, how that's, um, divvied out or allocated to school districts. Um, privates are allowed to share in that. That hasn't been determined yet. Nor do we know what the actual State School Aid Act is. Uh, we'll get some information on Friday, but my guess is we're going to have a second crack in, um, June that will have the April numbers in it and be, um, even more, um, probably serious, uh, negatively impacted. But for right now, we use the $500 deduct per full-time equivalent student. So what did we do about that? We had brainstorming sessions and core in the superintendents and areas to look. So freezing staff so that we only hire, we don't hire, you know, automatically that you and looking at no more additional hires, um, and using that attrition and retirement to reduce the number of staff. We looked at staff assignments so that staff assignments matched with the reductions in enrollment. And so as enrollment has declined, elementary, middle and high, then we assign the staff to that reduced amount of enrollment. We looked at program efficiencies. We, we were continuing to look at a virtual learning academy. We looked at both block grant amounts. Those are the months allocated to buildings to do a school improvement plans and cover office expenses and other paper and all that kind of stuff at the building level. And we looked at capital outlay spending. We looked at textbook purchases. We looked at an additional schools of choice admission for fall, which is on your agenda tonight to consider, um, a resolution for that. We looked at freezing, uh, travel and conference expenses. We looked at maximizing all our federal and grants to the extent possible. Use those funds to the extent possible so they can save the general fund dollars. And then we'll have some savings as we go from this year, June 30th, 2020 to June 30th, 2021 because we're not in, uh, face-to-face instruction at this time. And then we looked at, uh, at central office departments across the board. So we developed a plan. That plan included a goal of cuts at least $7.8 million. And that would remain, uh, 15% of remaining fund balance. So that was our initial goal, um, to get to, um, where we thought we needed to be. And then the rest would have to come from fund, pardon me, fund equity. So we will maintain the current staff where we could, but we would look at reductions of staff through attrition and retirement. We would look to spend the most restricted funds first. So again, the grants and the federal programs and maximize our flexibility that way. And then we looked at the use of fund equity, um, for one times, hopefully not for operating, but continue to maximize our cuts or use those cuts, um, to shore up our financial future. So we call them district-wide actionable items. These go across, um, levels and across all departments. So again, the savings from this year to the next. We looked at the, just deferring our textbook purchases for one year. We looked at the additional schools of choice admissions process because of COVID-19. We just didn't get the number of, um, applications that we would normally get. And so we wanted to move forward with an expansion of the timeframe in order to apply. And then we looked at shoring up, I'll call it, the enrollment levels against the staffing levels. And just that process alone, we were able to save 12.8, um, FTEs at about a million, $24,000 for a total of 4.985 is our first blush of actionable items. So then we went to the departments and mostly these are departments where, um, we can make cuts and we can look um, to, uh, these specific areas and, and move forward with them. So the superintendent's office to reduce contracted services. The teaching and learning department would reduce some consumables. The human resources department would cut down the number of days, um, in the premier substitute teacher program. Instead of starting right in September, they would start in October and gain some, um, savings as well. Look at professional development and other supplies. The student services department would look at professional development and contracted services as well and supplies and materials in that department. Communications and marketing would remove an investment in, uh, further, uh, expanding the EMS, uh, system upgrade. They would look at removing stipends and look at deferring contracted services for K-12 insights, since we're not going to do, uh, a full boat round, uh, survey that we usually do on an annual basis. So we're going to save those dollars as well. And then we're going to, um, not move forward with the social sentinel platform for a savings of about $30,000. In the area of nutritional services, we have a couple of people who were, um, allocated between the general fund and the food service fund. We're going to move those folks into the food service fund entirely and save about $39,000. In the maintenance and operations department, we're going to reduce some, um, work order and ground supplies. Uh, look at, um, deferring vehicle and equipment replacement, um, eliminating a position due to retirement. And then our utility savings, um, we work with, um, executive energy to review gas and electric. And we're able to, um, have a significant amount of utility savings from this year to next year, uh, projected for about $150,000. The finance department will remove some temporary accounting service help they had in a past year that they no longer need. And so our total savings is just shy of half a million in that, in those departments. And finally, in the areas of special education and integrated technology, um, those, um, department managers um, and administrators put forth, um, a reduction of teaching staff through attrition and retirements. Um, not fulfilling vacant pair, prepare, prepare professional positions. Um, looking at reducing supplies and then just delay filling a vacancy we've had for the balance of the year for an elementary teacher consultant. Um, and integrated technology, it's repairs and maintenance reductions, voice data and telephone costs. Um, removing some temporary staffing that they had over the summer. Um, and then a reduction of some equipment rental for just shy of, uh, half a million dollars in savings for those departments. So if you added all those up, um, that was about $6.2 million in, in total actionable items effective through today. Um, which would lower our deficit to about $10 million and have our fund equity remaining at about 14%. So again, we still have the CARES Act that's outstanding. And then all the transformation process that needs to go on tomorrow, uh, with the rest of our, um, management and administrative team. Just wanted to show you, this is an ongoing systemic change. It's not a one year. It's not going to come back. It's going to take multiple years in order to work our way out of this hole. Um, I think that, um, to the extent possible, we can get to our $7.8 million goal. Um, but it will take some work to do over the next, uh, 24, 48 hours. And then I'll come back and make a presentation at our next F and O meeting, um, which is on, um, May the 21st. And then I'll bring back all those suggestions and where we, um, uh, sit on the May 26th Board of Education meeting. That's really all the comments I had to make this afternoon or since evening. And so I would welcome any questions or comments any one of the F and O members want to make or a superintendent mirror.
Member Kehoe?
So I have comments but, and questions, but I'll defer to the other members to get their, their, let them.
So I have comments but, and questions, but I'll defer to the other members to get their, let them ask their questions first.
Member Berninski.
Hi Debbie, I have several questions and comments. First of all, thank you for this information. It's, it's very sobering. I'm wondering, you know, based on what I saw in the report from Bridge Magazine. There, they said, you know, twenty to twenty-five percent per pupil cut. So what I'm wondering is, do we think that the five hundred dollars per pupil is enough? Or do we need to look at more? If you want to comment on that now, you can, or you can wait.
I, I'll answer them as I comment. That's okay.
Yep.
Um, so. I don't know, but I am on a MSBO call. And MSBO, M A S I and M A S B wrote a joint letter to the governor and the Michigan Department of Education stating that if it wasn't, if it was that large. Pretty much many school districts throughout the state would be in deficit. I think that there's a number of things they need to vote on legislatively. And one of which would be a significant contribution is made on an annual basis to fund the MIPSers retirement system. And so they could defer that payment for one year to shore up the school aid fund. We'll see if they have the wherewithal to do that. I also think that I have compared notes with most of the surrounding Wayne County districts as well as some calls I'm on of Southeast Michigan, as well as a statewide call. We have every single Friday morning. And we seem to be in the, in the, of the opinion that some districts are hoping to be at three hundred to three fifty. Some district, most districts are in the five hundred category like we are. And some are, are in worst case at a thousand. What I think is that it'll be somewhere in there. And it may be a combination of, right to an executive order cut yet here in July to fix this year, and then they make another cut next year. And I think the culmination of those two will still be in the five hundred dollar range as a gross total of the two. But we don't have that information. We'll have more information on Friday. And then we'll be able to pivot from where we are today as a plan to a different plan should we hear more information on Friday.
I would also like to add with that, I think today. Just adding to that, today's bridge article is just an example of the fact that we just don't have economic information. So we've been working for the last few weeks on the unknown and, and making projections. And then today we see that article and that was the first time any of us had heard that much as far as even being, you know, two thousand dollars per student. As we know, we could not sustain. We could not sustain ourselves with two thousand dollars per student. So that is a really, really serious consideration. But I think in terms of as we continue to, to work forward. What we have is a little more time on our hands based on the fact that we've been such good stewards. And we do have a strong fund balance, which gives us time if this becomes a reality. Once we have more consistent financial information, it would give us the opportunity to plan more long-term. Because that would be significant reductions as it relates, as we know, eighty-five percent of our budget is, is people. And so it would give us some time to, to regroup. But to Debbie's point, we wouldn't be able to recover a two thousand. And so just a lot of moving parts right now.
Yes, definitely understood. I, I, and I'm hoping that we don't see those kind of cuts. But obviously we have to be prepared for anything, it seems like at this point. My next item is just a comment that I'm glad to see that you have a virtual school or academy and discussions. I think that there are a lot of parents who, even if school does open back up in the fall. There's a lot of parents who are afraid to send their children to school for fear of COVID-19. And so I think, you know, I would be in support of doing something like that. Next, it's sort of a question kind of for the board. And I know that there is a little bit of money in the, in the budget for the Board of Education for training and for stipends. I am wondering, I mean, I know, I know it's not much. But I would be willing to forego my stipend. And also, and I'm also suggesting that we cut board training budget. Just to, to help, I think it's important to, you know, show that we're willing to make a sacrifice as well. So I'm putting that out there. And then finally, for the reductions in the special ed budget. For the vacant para-professional positions, I just want to make sure, and I'm sure they're not. But I just want to make sure that these are not para-pros that are required by IEPs.
Currently, we have.
To my knowledge.
What would be emergency. Can, can you hear me? Currently, we have what is budgeted as an emergency para-professional. So sometimes within. Okay, sometimes within the school year, you may have a situation where a student is being evaluated. And we have an emergency placement of a one-on-one para-pro during that time period. So these aren't actual one-to-one positions that exist. By law, we would need to make sure that that is an IEP decision, not a budget decision. But these were additional FTEs that we have utilized to support those emergency type situations. So didn't get rid of that, but did a reduction of two FTEs in that area. I think it's two point five actually.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, I'm sorry, I have one final question. I thought I was done, but. In our board policies, we have a policy of a, it's a ten percent fund balance. Is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you all. Just wanted to support, you know, planned spending of our fund balance. Because I think this is exactly the kind of reason that we have kept our fund balance as high as we have. So I think it's important to, to try to preserve the services and staff that we have as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we go to member Keel? Okay, member Keel, you're up.
Kate, thank, thank you for raising the question. As we saw from Wayne Schmidt, the Senate Committee Chair. He's talking twenty-five percent reductions up to two thousand dollars. I mean, this is just a massive amount of money that would affect us. We saw that in, in WDIV, they discussed today. They had an interview with the superintendent of Detroit Public Schools Community District, who was hoping for a ten percent reduction as opposed to twenty-five percent. Even ten percent would be huge for us in terms of that, that reduction would be closer to eight hundred dollars than five hundred. And if that's what people are looking for or wishing for, I think we're going to be in big trouble here. So I think that we definitely have to be really focused on, on this process and the situation that we've got right now. I had a couple of specific questions. Debbie, thank you for the, the MIPSers. That was the thing that jumped out at me as well as, is that's an obvious way to plug that hole this year. If you defer that one year and then all of a sudden you've got that, that whole plug. I think that I wanted to make sure I understood in, in the proposed budget. There was a discussion of reducing the block or capital grants. I assume that those were eliminated in the budget proposal, not just reduced.
That's part of our conversation tomorrow during transformations.
Okay, because obviously, given where we're at, that we haven't meet our targets, that has to be eliminated. There's no way that we can allow that, that, that to continue if we're not, if we're trying to protect the, the budget process. The second thing that really.
Clarification, Patrick, when you're saying block grant. A block grant is the supply money for students. You're talking about Wayne Risa enhancement money, aren't you?
No, I'm talking about the supply money for students, the ten thousand dollars that was referenced in the presentation that we've historically provided from the Wayne Risa money.
Yeah, those are, so that, the block grant. The word block grant is, I think it's thirty dollars. Yeah. Right. And, and can you hear me?
I'm sorry, I missed that Monica. Can you?
Block grant is a, is a different. Yes, the block grant is actually, it's a formula thirty, I think it's thirty-two dollars per student. Depending on grade level that we give for supplies. You're referencing the capital improvement money that we've given from the enhancement mileage. That's what you're talking about, I believe, is the ten thousand, not the, not the block grant.
There's. There's one line item on the presentation. It's on page fifty-one of the presentation. It says reduce block grant amounts and capital outlay spending.
The capital outlay spending is what I believe that you are referencing in terms of.
Sorry, go ahead Monica.
I don't know if Debbie froze. I think she was talking. The capital outlay, those are together. The capital outlay spending is tied to. Debbie, you're freezing, I think.
Okay, and has that been eliminated in your budget proposal?
Each building gets ten thousand.
Debbie's cutting out on me.
So the capital outlay is ten thousand, ten thousand dollars per building is the capital outlay. And that's part of the enhancement mileage enhancements to the buildings. The block grant is a supply category and that's thirty, thirty-two or thirty-five, depending upon the level for full-time equivalent student.
Okay, and what are the reductions that we've put in the budget for each of those two line items?
Well, they're in the elementary, middle and high school transformations categories for tomorrow. So they're, they're.
So you haven't done those reductions yet.
Talking about them tomorrow in their, they're not in the information you saw today.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand in the, the process, you said six point two nine or six point two-two million dollars. That are the actionable items. Are they included in those actionable items?
No. They will, they.
I'm looking at page fifty-eight of the presentation.
During the transformations process.
Okay, so we have an opportunity to save another three hundred thousand dollars from the, the, the recent money allocations. And are we also discussing the reduction in the block grant dollar amounts as well tomorrow?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Great. So the, the next question I had, thank you. So the next question I has was, was with respect to special education. We heard from, from, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on his name, the Risa, that there's money that's allocated to support those teachers at special education. We, instead of cutting those, those, those special education teachers, instead have Risa fund them.
Yeah, so that's what I said, to maximize grants. Other funding sources except for the general fund for those that can be. So autistic center program, Act eighteen, IDEA. All the federal programs that we, and state programs, which have grant requirements to them is where we're going to maximize our usage of those positions.
Okay, so are these reductions that we're talking about here on special education in excess of those grants? Or would we, would be offsetting those additional grants to retain those, those teachers and those services?
I have to call, talk to Jims who proposed these cuts. But I believe that this is reductions to the general fund, then reallocate if needed. But some of these positions haven't filled for the entire year, like the elementary teacher consultant. And so we're just going to eliminate the position.
So I can, if you can hear my way in.
Okay.
There's portions of special education that is refunded through Act eighteen and other portions of positions that are covered from the general fund. What you see here are general funded positions. And so looking at, for example, the teacher consultant would always be a general fund position, looking at not filling that for next year. In the emergency paras, those would not be funded through Risa. Those are general funded positions.
Thank you for the clarity, Monica. Okay, my, my next question is, is on the, the slide fifty-nine of the deck. It's the two slides forward. The multi-year budget impact. In, in multi-year budget impact, why, sorry, slide seventeen of that. Just before Q and A there. Thank you. In multi-year budget impact, why are we assuming that expenditures are continuing to rise? Especially in years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four?
CPI. And in our various contracts. So we have to go back and renegotiate all our contracts.
We're in a situation. We would only have, if I remember correctly, the majority of our contracts expire at the end of. Say again Debbie.
Patrick, why don't we wait a minute? Wait, let Debbie's finish and then we'll come back to you.
So this is a graph that represents if we did nothing. If we made no cuts, if we made no changes, our situation was going to continue. That's all this graph does.
Okay, I don't think that's realistic where we're at. Can we get a graph that tells us based upon where we're at right now and the cuts and changes that we're discussing? Because this is making an assumption with respect to the red. And we should same assumption with respect to the, to the expenditures. So it's a more reflective grant of the real situation.
Sure, I can certainly change that for next time.
Thank you. And then the. The back of the napkin math that I did, if I look at the five hundred dollars cut that we've budgeted and compare that against a two thousand dollar cut. It looks like that would be about another fifteen hundred dollars per student or about twenty-five million dollars. From my, my back of the napkin calculations. That would take us to a fund balance of, of, of zero or negative. Is that correct?
So seventeen thousand children is who we have in district. And so any cut times seventeen thousand is where you're going to get your back of the napkin total.
Right, that's where I got to, is, is I got to about twenty-five million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then, can I just share?
The.
We're having some problems with audio here. So we've been, said if we're not talking to turn off our cameras, this is just us that are at the board office. So for, just for the public, if you don't see our faces, we're trying to work with technology in here. And so we'll only turn on our cameras when we're speaking.
Thank you. So the, the last question is, is Kate, there was a really good suggestion with respect to the, the boards. From my perspective, I don't take the stipend. So I would be fine with obviously cutting that back and not taking any training. And I think that anything that we can do as a board to play our part would be useful in supporting this budget process. It's not a lot of money, but you know, if we reduce our salary to zero percent or our stipend to zero percent, then that would give us a chance to at least put something back in.
Okay, anything else, Member Kehoe?
No.
All right, I saw Miss, or Member McCoyn's hand up, so I'm going to go to her next.
Yeah, thank you so much. I really appreciate this presentation, all the hard work that the administration has done on this. I know this is not exactly what we thought of how we want school to have to look. And having to think about cuts is pretty alarming to me. So I want to make sure as we're going through this that we're not, we're making sure that we have sufficient staffing levels for the students we're going to have. Keeping in mind that when the kids come back to school, they're going to need additional support than what we're probably used to providing for our students. Emotional support after they've been home for, you know, months, when they come back to school, they're still might be fearful. They've they've lived through trauma, many of them, that we don't even know about. And so they're going to need those emotional supports, but also we're going to have kids that I have had very very diverse home learning experiences. And we're going to have to make sure that we have sufficient staff and not like bigger class sizes to support all those levels of learners that we're going to get into our classrooms, because, you know, some children may come back and be advanced because they're self, they're self-starters, they're very motivated. They had parents who are able to, you know, move them ahead, and then we're going to have other families that have just been in survival mode. And those children might have regressed. So I just want to make sure when we're talking about attrition of staff that we're not losing. We're not going to be cutting to where we can't provide the exceptional education our families expect. And and then so that was, that's really my my concern about this. And as far as the the stipend and the the training, I finished my level one training, so I'm good with the training for the year. And I am not opposed to giving up the stipend. I generally speaking, as several other board members I know do, donate most of it back to different organizations within the district. So I would be okay with that. That's really all I have.
Thank you, Member McCoyn. Yes, Monica, go ahead. We definitely, we started the conversation at FNO, just about one of our, really trying to preserve the mission, vision, the program this year and in in doing so by, when I started off earlier today in my soup's report, talking about stability, when possible, being able to provide that stability, because you're absolutely right, families are in trauma right now, and we just don't know what we expect. And we have put a lot of support, social, emotional supports in our budget. We're able to because of the enhancement mileage. And so discussions right now around reductions of even the newer positions that we brought into the budget. It is really key for us, as we're doing this work, to try to identify for this year some cuts that we can make outside of the people, so we can preserve the program, the best support students. And as I said earlier, fund balance buys us time to really be intentional with, if we are forced to make those reductions of people, what what does that look like? And so I appreciate your your thoughts on that. We are thinking in in that same manner to make sure, when possible, that we're able to, at least through this budget, maintain our staffing levels. I will also say a conversation that is on the table for transformation, that you as a board need to weigh in as well, because it's really your decision is around class size. It's something that we have had to increase in the past. We're talking about that tomorrow. As you know, one student from K-12 is about a $1.5 million savings. What I said at FNO, and I still stand by today, that is, would be a last resort for me as well, because as we're looking to return students back safely, we don't even know what school will look like. And with social distancing and the number of students that are in a classroom, even one more body could be more problematic. Ultimately, that would be your decision as a board, but looking at a recommendation, those were the two items that we really march forward with in in making our reductions was to try to keep class size the same and try to hold on to our staff if possible for this year.
Okay, Member McCoyn, did you have any other questions, comments, before I move on to Member Kehoe, who has his hand up?
I guess my last comment is I'm glad that we have maintained a healthy fund balance for just this reason, so that we are able to now tap into that and then still provide the education for our students that we need to. So thank you again to the staff who has really helped us keep that going.
Thank you, Member McCoyn. Member Kehoe?
Sure, two, two, two pieces of comments. One is I wholeheartedly support Superintendent Merritt's perspective that we want to keep the classrooms intact. That includes both student class, students' class sizes, the support services, the teachers, everything that we're doing. But we are in an unprecedented time right now. I don't know if that will be possible if we experience the kinds of reductions that are being bandied about by the the Senate leader. I'm hoping that that won't be the case, or that we'll have some processes like addressing the the temporary repeal in NIPsers rates to be able to help adjust that. But we we absolutely make that as our first and number one priority, but we have to obviously maintain a balanced budget in what we're doing and make sure that we are good stewards of of the community's money. You know, we have that healthy fund balance largely in part because the community supported us with the Wayne Risa mileage. And that Wayne Risa mileage will be coming up again this fall, and it's going to be crucial to have the community be able to continue to support us with that, because that would be another between four and a half and $6 million that would come out of our budget if that did not get renewed, which is a massive impact to this process. We maintain that healthy fund balance in order to cushion us for the uncertainty in Risa, but it's really come in handy in this pandemic. And so we have to make sure that that we get the community support where possible to continue to do that, and that we need to make sure that we're continuing to look at every area that we can to reduce our costs to not impact that classroom and the students. And make sure that, as as Ms. McCoyn said, that we add the necessary supports or we maintain those supports that we do have to support those kids that are going to be going through some of these challenges.
Okay, Member Brooks, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo the same thing that I really appreciate the work that Finance Office does. And, you know, I would definitely forego my stipend. And but I I would definitely like the us to concentrate on the teachers. You know, everybody would like to have the tools that they have, but sometimes you can forego without the tools. I think the teachers are more important at this point. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Member Brooks. Member Lazarowitz, do you have any questions, comments?
No, no questions, no comments. Everything was discussed.
Thank you. I just want to share a few thoughts. This is probably one of the hardest conversations we've had to have as a board, and we know that this is directly impacting our kids. This is why we got into this work from the board level to the teacher, to the administrators. And so I echo what some of you have said with regard to minimizing the impact to the students instructional experiences. We are in the business of making sure that our kids get the best instructional opportunities. So whatever we can do to support that is critical. And as Member McCoyn said, this is the time when they need us more than ever, and we have to make sure that we do whatever possible and in a smart way, projecting and strategically looking at finances at every level. And I appreciate the presentation, because you did go through every level of the budget and looked at where you could make those cuts. And I do appreciate having a really healthy fund balance. And again, this is, you know, we've talked about in the past where people said, let's just spend that down, spend that down. But this is exactly the reason why districts have those healthy fund balances to buy us some time until we are a little bit more stable. And I you commend what everyone else is saying as far as protecting students and class sizes and their support that they need, especially given that they have been out of the classroom. And I want to say, Member McCoyn mentioned that there might be more gaps than what we had anticipated. So how will we fill those gaps? Some of these kids are going to need some additional support that we were not ready for. So again, that's the hard work of the organization and the board to continue looking at that. With regard to the stipend, I don't take a stipend as well for the board position, so I'm perfectly fine moving forward with that and minimizing the the board travel and learning opportunities. So yes, we're looking at every aspect possible to make those cuts, but I want to protect the kids. I want to protect the programs, and I want to protect the services that they get and that they need. Yes, Ms. Merritt?
If I can just add, with Trustee Kehoe mentioned the enhancement mileage, and that we are in year five of the enhancement mileage, five of six. And so I will bring back for the board and community at our next meeting, a discussion to just provide an update on that enhancement mileage, and what does that cost mean for, that that fund mean for Plymouth Canton? And what would the impact be if that is a mileage that is not able to be renewed? So just want to be able to give, shed some light on that, because absolutely, we've been able to do some incredible things for our students because of the enhancement mileage. And we're able to have the conversation that we're we're having today about trying to to have a little bit of stability based on a general fund that is is a fund balance that is stable. We've made some great reductions, but we've also really been able to benefit from the enhancement mileage. So we will come back at the next board meeting and just give an update about that process.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other questions, comments with regard to the presentation, the budget overview presentation. So we will move to the next item. Action item number 20 dash 05 dash 53. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that on action item 20 dash 05 dash 53, that we approved the enrollment for non-resident applicants of the for the 2020, 2021 school year pursuant to schools of choice section 105, 105C, first and final reading.
Thank you, Member Brooks. Thank you. Motion was made by, thank you. Motion was made by Member Kehoe, seconded by Member Brooks. Any questions, discussions?
Just for
This was discussed heavily at SPA. Go ahead.
Yeah, we also discussed it at FNO. Go ahead, Anupam.
No, I just wanted to say that when we discussed it at SPA, we we were in support of this, looking at every opportunity to make sure that we have a good number of students. And if there are spots that we'd like to fill them and anticipating that we might have some losses of students, we need to fill those gaps as well.
Yeah, we also, when we discussed this at FNO, there was the closer period for the previous process occurred in the middle of the the COVID crisis, and so families might have been understandably distracted from this. So by opening this up, as well as rec, as opening up to the ninth and 10th grades, we maximize the ability to support those people in the community that might want to attend the district or those in the neighboring areas that want to attend the district. And this is a chance for us to also see if we can close some of those budget gaps.
Yes, absolutely. And Ms. Merritt, I have a question with regard to advertising and getting this information out there through multiple channels to make sure that people are getting this information different, different ways, multiple times. Can you share some insight on that?
Yeah, so we already have been talking about really just doing a full court press on promotion. During our last window as well, we were very sensitive to the pandemic that was happening, and a lot of our communication that was going out was really about our own community and and surviving and navigating that. And so this will give us that opportunity to utilize the channels that we've had in terms of our push out. I'll have Mr. Brandon join us as well with the various modes in which we use to communicate, but definitely doing a big push during this time period to get this information out. Mr. Brandon, can you share?
Absolutely. I will utilize all of our district resources for this particular window. Most notably, our social media boost is where we tend to get the highest response rate in terms of promotion. And and we didn't do that as much last time for the reasons that Superintendent Merritt cited. And so this time around, we'll do a number of those. That's a great way to reach people in a convenient fashion that are outside of our community. And so you'll see us promote on all of our traditional district outlets and a very heavy social media, social media push with those boosts.
Thank you, Nick. I wonder if something prominent can also be displayed on the PCCS website that talks about application being open, like right up front?
Of course, we'll have a rotating graphic on the front page that links to the application. That's something that's always been part of plan, and we'll continue to do that.
Great, thank you. Other questions, comments about this resolution? Yes, Member Berninski?
So when I initially heard about this, I wasn't really sure how I felt about it. And in light of the budget numbers that we're seeing coming from the state, I am going to be in favor of this. But I am hoping that administration can try to reach out to the people, the families that you know of that have inquired about this, because I understand there have been inquiries since the window closed, the first window closed. Also, I'm hoping that in the future, that even if we aren't planning to open a second school of choice window, that we can still keep track of families who do inquire after deadlines.
Thank you, Member Berninski. Any other questions, comments?
I have one.
Sure, Member McCoyn. Go ahead.
Well, another question. Yeah, I think this is a great idea, because there are families, especially opening it up to with a ninth and 10th grade seat, families that have an older child that is interested in, you know, attending the park for all the programming that we have, but don't want to split their family up. I think this is a good opportunity to expand our enrollment while giving students an opportunity to be experiencing the educational opportunities that we can offer to our students too. So I think this is a good idea. And for the families who just, quite frankly, that wasn't on their radar during the first window. So this is a good opportunity for those families as well.
Thank you. Member Brooks, did you have a question, comment?
I was wondering if there was any idea on Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I I can hear you, Doug.
Can you hear me now? Oh, okay, yeah. I was just wondering about the the other districts around us. And to see if, you know, because there may be students that really don't want to stay with a failing district around our area and want to come to us, and we need to reach out to those people, those students. That's it.
Thank you. Any any other questions, comments about this resolution before we take a roll call vote? Okay, hearing none. Member Brooks, would you please read out the names for the roll call vote?
Yes, First Member, Member Berninski?
Yes.
Member Brooks, yes. Member Kehoe?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Liz Arrows?
Yes.
Member McQuain?
Yes.
And members to do?
Yes. We have six yeses and zero no's. So the motion passes six zero for action item number twenty dash zero five dash fifty three. Resolution to approve the enrollment of non-resident applicants for the twenty twenty one school year pursuant to schools of choice, section one oh five and one oh five C, first and final reading. Next, we have another action item. Uh, and I'm looking for a motion for that action item. Member Kehoe?
Sorry, just getting to the action item. So I moved that we consider for the resolution for desktop technology purchase, first and final reading, action item twenty dash oh five dash fifty four.
Thank you. Motion was made by member Kehoe.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Seconded by member Brooks. Any discussion on this resolution? Yes, member Kehoe.
So we discussed this
Go ahead.
We discussed this extensively at FNO and uh, I appreciate the work that the administration did to come back with a uh, a cheaper option, uh, especially with respect to the accessories and the memories and getting creative and how they uh, installed and deployed those technologies. I think they'll save some significant money and still provide us the same uh, powerful solutions for the, our students.
Okay, thank you. Member Berninski?
Uh, I just wanted to point out that this is coming out of the twenty fifteen bond series. Um, and so this is not general fund money.
Thank you. Excellent points made by member Kehoe and member Berninski. Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Member Brooks, would you please call a roll call vote?
Yes, uh, first member Berninski?
Yes.
Member Brooks, yes. Member Kehoe?
Yes.
Member Liz Arrows?
Yes.
Number McQuain?
Yes.
Members to do?
Yes. Motion passes six zero for action item number twenty dash zero five dash fifty four. Resolution to purchase desktop technology, first and final reading. And that covers all of our action items. Uh, we are now moving to number three, part of the agenda, teaching and learning. And we will have a presentation by Beth Riel for the continuity of learning plan.
And I'm going to apologize in advance. I'm getting unstable um, internet notifications. So I'm going to leave my video off while I do this so that I don't cut out.
That's fine.
So um, Mr. Brandon is going to share with you the continuity of learning plan and I'm going to walk through the sections of the continuity of plan and then take any questions. On April second, twenty twenty, Governor Whitmer issued executive order twenty twenty dash thirty five, which closed all K twelve Michigan schools for the remainder of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. This executive order also outlined the requirement for each school district to develop and implement an approved continuity of learning COVID nineteen response plan no later than April twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Our full plan includes information about student learning, pay for school employees, collaboration among stakeholders, food distribution, coordination with Wayne Risa for disaster relief childcare centers, implementation of students' IEPs, individualized educational plans, and five oh fours, and where to find our posted plan. PCCS is dedicated to ensuring that all students have access to high quality, standards aligned teaching and learning to the extent possible during the mandated school closure. In order to do so, we're implementing a hybrid model of instruction with the primary method of instruction taking place in a virtual classroom. Teachers are using one of three online learning platforms to provide this virtual classroom, seesaw, Google Classroom, or Moodle. The specific platform that students use is shared with families by their classroom teachers. In addition to the online platforms, teachers are using a variety of additional tools to support remote learning. These tools include video conferences, use of apps such as remind or class dojo, email, phone calls, robo calls, and communications through MyStar as well as other forms of communication. In order to engage in a virtual classroom, our students need a device that can connect to the internet. Prior to the school closure, PCCS families could opt into the district's one-to-one Chromebook initiative. Many of our families did so. Some families did not take part in the district one-to-one initiative and can now do so by requesting a district issued device through filling out a form online or calling the number on our website. We are also providing support for families who need internet access through connections to free or low-cost providers as well as hotspots when needed. Additionally, we have created a parent tech resource page where families get support with digital resources and hardware questions. The number to call for assistance with technology is seven three four two eight 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 one two one. For our families who either cannot get or do not want internet access, we are also providing instructional content through the creation of a weekly packet of core instructional materials that is either picked up or mailed to homes. During the current stay-at-home, stay-safe order, we are mailing them through US Postal Service mail. Packets can be requested through an online form or by contacting the building principal or by calling us at seven three four four one six seven seven eight two. PCCS is also providing all of these alternative modes of instruction, remote learning, or instructional packets for our students with individualized education programs. This applies to our students in both center-based and non-center-based programs. We are working together with our students and their families to implement the goals in our students' IEPs to the best extent possible during this time. And although we are making every effort possible to ensure access, we realize that some of our students and families have significant issues at home during this time that do not allow them to participate in our programs. For this reason, students are not penalized if they are unable to complete the coursework or to participate in remote learning during this mandated school closure period. Even though our students are not penalized if they cannot participate in our remote learning opportunities or complete instructional packets, we truly believe that monitoring student learning is important as it allows us to plan supplemental lessons, provide feedback on student academic progress, and determine the need for additional summer learning opportunities. As a part of managing and monitoring learning, our teachers will continue to record student academic progress and provide feedback to students and their families. Where appropriate, this includes grading student work. Specific information about grading during the school closure has been provided to our families by the building principals and their classroom teachers. During this time of uncertainty, many of our students may also be experiencing anxiety, fear, or stress. For this reason, our counselors, social workers, behavioral specialists, psychologists, and other members of the social emotional learning teams are available for supports. Along with providing direct services, this team has been creating enrichment resources for our students, staff, and parents that are found on our home learning hub. We have also launched an emotional wellness support Caroline to support our students. Families may contact the Caroline by phone, leave a message, and they will receive a follow-up contact by one of our district's mental health team members or our building staff. The Caroline can be reached at seven three four five eight two five zero five five. Many of our students at PCCS rely on our schools for breakfast and lunch. To support our students during the school closure period, we will distribute food at five sites every Wednesday from eleven AM to one PM or until our supplies run out. This program is for all of our students eighteen years of age and under as well as our students aged eighteen to twenty-six who are serviced with an IEP. The sites for food distribution are Discovery Middle School, Erickson Elementary, Liberty, Liberty Middle School, Salem High School, and West Middle School. Food distribution for our families will continue through June third, twenty twenty. The PCCS continuity of learning plan also provides some additional details about our estimated expenditures that the district will encounter as we implement our plan, the ways in which stakeholders provide an input into the plan, how the plan is communicated to families, and how the district will support our local ISD to mobilize disaster relief childcare centers for members of the essential workforce. Full details about all of these additional areas and the full plan can be found on our district website at www.pccsk12.com. So that's kind of the overview of the continuity of learning plan. And I'm going to pause for any questions that you might have.
I see member Kehoe's hand. Go ahead, member Kehoe.
Can you talk to us a little bit about what's happening with respect to the teachers and WebEx or Zoom or Google Meet or um, any of the other online uh, screen sharing and video uh, enabling platforms and how they're being used, what they're allowed to do, how students can participate in that process, what the district is supporting to, to facilitate those activities?
Certainly. So the teachers are allowed to use um, video conferencing tools. Right now, um, we're transitioning them to Cisco WebEx just for um, additional security and privacy reasons. But um, up until this coming week, they've been allowed to use Google Class or um, Zoom or Google Meet or um, transitioning to WebEx. Teachers can use those to do live um, video conferencing with classrooms or they can choose to, they can also do some recording of lessons that they post to students. It's really individualized based on the teacher and the needs of their students. So um, the district has not put any restrictions on how teachers may use those. Um, they just support the needs of the students based on individual conversations with students and families. And also um, we've provided a number of resources to support our teachers in doing that. Our instructional technology, our integrated technology team has done um, both recorded professional development as well as live um, sessions um, by a video conference to help support our teachers in the ability to do that. Um, I think, was there something else in your question I didn't answer yet, Patrick?
No, that's, I mean, that's good. I, I think that I've seen really mixed usage of, of those technologies throughout the district. And I think that it might be useful for us to provide some more guidance um, from the, the families and teachers that I've spoken to as well as the, the students. They're really craving that, uh, that, that, that attention and that direct connection with their educators. And I think that in some cases, it's being done extraordinarily well. But um, in other cases, it is, it's maybe, has some opportunities for improvement. And I appreciate that professional development and all of our teachers are starting at this in something totally new. None of them were really prepared to do this kind of process. But providing some mechanisms and guidance and um, best practices, I would say, on how this could, could work would be helpful um, in, in reaching those students across the, the last um, month that we have of school.
Yep. And the, the tech team under Mark's direction has been really creating a lot of tips and tricks and um, tutorial pieces that help um, provide that kind of resource for our teachers as well. With the understanding that as we look to the fall, if we, which, you know, becomes more and more likely as we look ahead, as, as we're looking at a hybrid model or remote learning and stuff, the more training we do now, the better our teachers are set up for success in the fall. So I appreciate that, those comments.
Yeah, the, one last related thing is, is that I, I'm also seeing a somewhat uneven approach in terms of the learning. Or actually, the more precisely, the teaching portion of this. Again, some of them do a fantastic job with uh, with the, the, the teaching. But in others, it's, they give you the assignment, but not as much actual teaching. They may make themselves available for questions. But you know, finding ways to be able to either do that live um, teaching or to do recording of lessons uh, and making that so that especially when we've got some, some teachers throughout the district that are really excellent at this. And with our aligned curriculum, we have an opportunity to share some of those fantastic materials that are coming from some areas for maybe to support some of those teachers that maybe this is not their forte.
Yep. One of the things that the, the PLCs have been doing and doing very well is really helping support each other. We've seen a, a vast amount of collaboration among our teachers, especially those who are more technologically adept, really supporting those who are more digital natives and, and digital immigrants, or digital immigrants coming into the process and are a little more hesitant. Um, we're really trying to wrap all supports around them, both the instructional technology specialists and instructional, integrated technology team as well as um, we, we call them technology buddies, where our teachers are really supporting each other and helping people overcome a little bit of fear of some things, but also build the skillsets to be able to connect in multiple ways with kids to help support kid, our young people. Especially because we know that social emotional piece of connecting with your teacher and connecting with each other is so critical at this time.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, member Berninski?
Hi, thank you, Beth. Um, we went over this in SPA already, but um, I thought of a few more questions. Um, I guess, you know, the feedback I've been getting from um, friends who have kids in school because my kids have graduated um, is, is, it's still that there's a lot of confusion and um, you know, I, I understand it's, this is all new to, to all of us. And on, you know, unexpected and we were unprepared um, for this to happen where we had to go to virtual learning and um, close our schools. But I still, I still think families are confused. Um, and there, and as Patrick said, he, I was just, I was writing the word uneven down and he, and then he said uneven. I was like, um, there's, I think uneven implementation throughout the district. Um, so what I'm wondering is how is administration supporting our staff and also, at the same time, also making sure that um, the plan is being implemented as we intend it to be?
Yep. So the building principals, as well as the central office team, the teaching and learning team, as well as other folks have been um, implementing uh, multiple phases of professional learning and profession, you know, helping support PLCs and different levels. But also thinking about the other piece, which is um, checking in with teachers, making sure they're checking with families, um, the accountability piece. We have um, ongoing uh, spreadsheets and stuff that we're, we're, we've created that we're, that are being shared across. We're um, checking in to, to make sure that our young people and, and their families are being checked in with. But also um, understanding that we have to differentiate very much during this time. Um, some of the feedback we get from some families is they want to pause right now. Other families are saying we need more, we need more because because I can't do this at home alone. And, and we certainly understand that. And so what we're trying to do is to the, to the extent possible, really support that. And what I would ask is if, if a parent is feeling like either, either side of that, that they really communicate with us, communicate with the, the classroom teacher as well as the building leaders so that we can help ensure that everybody is doing everything to the extent possible and that we are really supporting our teachers in this shift. Because, you know, just as we know, people have skillsets across the board. The more we can help support and grow them, the more important and, and the, the better our programming becomes. So we, we do recognize that people have different skillsets and we're trying to maximize everybody's skillset and help support everybody to grow, no matter where they're at in their teaching profession and their teaching quality and implementation right now. So we continue to do that. Um, the principals are meeting uh, at, at least every, every week, if not more often, with their, their staff to support the needs, to really have open, honest communication together to really help grow and ensure people have the supports they need. So again, I would ask that if, if folks are feeling that they're not getting what they need, they really need to reach out and, and let us know.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and um, I have a friend who did call me with some concerns and I did encourage her to reach out. So I'm glad to hear um, you say that also. Um, another question I have is about our staff and just wondering, you know, like, we were making sure that are trying to make sure that families had devices and had in um, access to internet. At this point, I'm imagining, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, because it would be actually good if I'm wrong, but I'm imagining that we are relying on staff having internet at home that they're paying for. So what I'm wondering is, do we, are we sure that all of our staff has access to the internet? has access to the internet and that they don't need support from the district on this?
Yes, we are. We asked all of our building principals to connect with their teachers to let us know. We did have some teachers who needed some additional support in getting stable internet. And so we've worked through that process as well. And then in relation to our students, we have handed out two hundred and seventy-five new Chromebooks since the closure and we've replaced a hundred and five. So we've done three hundred and eighty Chromebooks since that time. What we're getting now from our students is requests for just switching out. So if there's an issue with a Chromebook and stuff. So we're, we're, we feel like we're solid on both ends of that. Additionally, in addition to the communication that I gave earlier too, we also have two other pieces that help kind of support and unpack the continuity of learning plan for our families. One of which is this frequently frequently asked questions document that Nick has put on the screen for us. And then we also did a video for families who would rather hear it auditorily than read through our plan and stuff as well, just to support some additional families in unpacking and understanding the COL, our continuity of learning plan. So there are some questions in here are some questions that these are the ones we've been hearing a lot. So continue to link to these. And this is a a working document. So as we hear additional questions that come, we will put them in here as well. So I'll pause for any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Before we go to member Kehoe, I saw member Brooks' hand up. So member Brooks, do you have a question or comment?
Uh, yeah, I'm kind of concerned with the different types of meetings, virtual meetings that we're having. You mentioned one that the industry uses that I've used before, but, you know, like, I've found that a lot of lot of parents, they really know how to use the ones they use at work. And I'm just looking for consistency to see if there is a plan in the future to just have one particular one. Because a lot of times, if you want to use the best portions of these programs, you have to pay for it. And what I don't want to see is like, you know, five or six subscriptions, you know, district subscriptions for different types of meetings when one particular one could be used instead. So I'm just a little concerned about if if we're ever going to use it in the future. If if we are, then we should really have one particular one. So every it's it's a consistent across the board. And, you know, I've used, you know, I I finally used the one that we use here and then the meet, Google Meet. So I had to teach myself really fast on how to use that with a teacher. But, you know, my concerns are with like elementary schools where they only have the one teacher. It's fine, you know, for a family to say, hey, this one teacher uses this. But when you get into middle school and and high school where they have six, possibly six different teachers and in each teacher does it differently, it could be confusing to the parents. So I'm just kind of looking for a little consistency across the board with the particular program that we use. And if there was any thought to that and if we're going to be using this in the future or if this is just a one-time thing because of COVID nineteen.
Well, the the program, the video conferencing programs, I'm assuming you're talking about video conferencing right now, the video conferencing program that reporting all the teachers over into, and they've been training on this for the last two weeks, is shifting everybody into Cisco WebEx because it's it's the one that has the greatest level of HIPAA and FERPA compliance, but it also allows the teacher to do some additional things, like you can set up some smaller classrooms and stuff where you can you can go into a a smaller area when you need to do some intentional work with a small group versus the whole group. And there's some additional functionality tools to the to Cisco WebEx that helps support teaching and learning in a different way. So that's what we've shifted over to based on the recommendation from the integrated technology team, Mark, Andrew, and a lot of great work that they did in putting together, looking at all of the variety of tools and determining which one is the best fit for teaching and learning and also to help support all of the security and privacy things that we've seen a lot of issues with nationally. So that's the plan moving forward is that we would support Cisco WebEx for all of our classrooms, K twelve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Kehoe?
Uh, two questions, one on the subject of the Cisco WebEx. Are we paying for that or is that something we're getting for free from Cisco?
We are paying for it.
Okay, because I've noticed that Zoom has had a bad reputation, especially initially, but at least from what I'm seeing and how I'm using it in my corporate setting, they've moved to a two hundred and fifty-six bit encryption and that they state that they're HIPAA and FERPA compliant and that they provide free accounts for primary and secondary schools. So how much is the cost for the WebEx and did we explore other options?
Yep. I'll actually let Mark, since he is on the call, I will ask Mark to kind of pop in here as well.
Sure. So we looked at Cisco WebEx, Microsoft Teams, Google Meet, GoToMeeting. We looked at a a number of them and we looked at them against a lot of different criteria. We're actually in a trial period, a ninety-day trial period with Cisco. So we don't have to pay anything now. We would pay a dollar per staff FTE that's instructional based on the MDEs report out. So we'd be paying around eleven hundred dollars a month with a contract that is a month to month. And that would be presumably spilling into the fall. Google, I mean, sorry, Zoom, we did take advantage of initially their offering for K twelve. And we applied for and received an elevated basic package that allowed for one webinar license, one large meeting license, and the exemption off the forty-minute cap. And I would agree that they have made some improvements on their on their security. You have to actually pay for the HIPAA compliant rooms. Those are two hundred dollars per room. Northville is, so schools that are looking at Zoom for paid are typically paying around three dollars per FTE.
Got it.
So anyway, we we looked and we actually really liked the, so.
Thanks for the explanation, Mark. I appreciate that. I did, I mean, I just was looking at the initial things. I know that we use it as a corporation with Zoom and we were paying half what we were for WebEx. So, but I it sounds like we're getting a good deal with WebEx. I like the fact that it's month to month. My my second question was really around teacher support. I've heard from friends and other people in the community that some of their teachers are just really struggling with this process. And I know that if a teacher was going through something, whether it be family or whatever it is, that they would be able to be out and we would provide a substitute. What are we doing for those teachers that have got circumstances or situations that are going on where they are overwhelmed and they can't work the way they historically would have been able to? How do we support those teachers in this process?
So all that kind of hits both HR and my department. So I'm gonna let Liz kind of, sorry to put you on the spot, Liz, but
No, I'm fine.
I'll let Liz speak to the part, the HR part first, and then I'll speak to our end of it.
Sure. So to respond to your question is that if a teacher is going to take a personal business day, family illness day, sick day, they would just put that in our absence management system just like they would have before the COVID nineteen pandemic took place. If someone is needs something more extensive, the employee, typical employees would either reach out to their building principal or to Heather Fitzpatrick, and we would work on to solve that together.
Okay, so we support them from an HR perspective with FMLA or any of the other things that we need to do?
Absolutely.
And then from an education perspective, how do we backstop those teachers?
So can you explain to me what you mean by backstopping?
Well, if 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 a teacher had to go out either from FMLA or for a personal day or whatever, we bring a substitute in. What are we doing in virtual situations?
Same thing. So we're working with our premier subs and training them as well so that people could seamlessly move in and out when needed.
Okay, so we have, we have the ability to have that happen and we can bring in substitutes when that's occurring.
That's correct.
So if someone's not seeing the, I mean, obviously, the, we don't know what teachers are going through. So there may be a situation that's causing them to not be responsive or whatever the situation is. And then we can reach out or have people reach out to the to their building administrators when they have concerns about a particular teacher and what's happening or maybe not happening and make sure that that teacher is getting the support that they need.
Absolutely. Yep. And also, you know, we're monitoring and we're working closely with the principals and working closely with the teachers so that that communication happens earlier rather than later, because we also don't want to lag in student in the in the connection with the student. So, you know, we we have some systems in place so that if a student doesn't connect with the teacher and a, you know, the teachers aren't connecting with the principals, that that we can surround them all with support.
Great. Thank you very much.
If I can just illustrate something that just happened tonight that's to the point. We had a staff member that wasn't in in two meetings this week. And I had a principal email or text me today and say, have, can you look and see when the last time he was online, either logged in or in MyStar? So I did. And it was, his last email was the eighth of of May. Two teachers went to his house. He's lives in the country to find out what was going on with him. And they sent me a picture. It was on my phone that his, he had lost his phone service for a week. And so, but we didn't know, but they 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 were very concerned and people are watching out for each other.
I'm really glad to hear that. That's that's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, I just want to say thank you to Mark and his team for thoroughly vetting the video conference tool to be consistent for teachers and students and looking at not only just security, but also the financial aspect of it. So I appreciate the thorough work that you have done with that. And Beth and your team, everyone that was involved with the continuity of learning plan, thank you for putting this together. We know that this is not the ideal virtual learning that we expect of teachers and students. This is what we call emergency planning and people are doing the best that they can. And I'm hoping that we are learning at every level from administration, teachers, parents, students on how to improve upon this as we transition into the fall, knowing that some of this could be repeated or altered or modified. But we do, I think we all understand the online blended learning aspect is going to be more of the reality for our students moving into the fall. And the more preparation we can do upfront for that, the better with regard to planning, coordinating efforts, time, teacher training, and really having teacher teams work on classes together. So I look forward to hearing more about the next part of this as we move into summer and fall. Thank you, Beth. All right. And I also appreciate Beth pointing out that there's an FAQ. So feel free to check that out and the video that was created for community members in case that they didn't want to read through the twenty-seven page document. We are now at item E for, yes, member Berninski?
Sorry, I I just wanted to also say that the FAQ was really, really, really helpful, the FAQ documents. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. We're at item E, discussion portion of this. And normally we talk about our upcoming professional learning as a board, some of the sessions that we had put aside. So the times that we had put aside to work with Len, our board governance, obviously, all of that is halted. And we will regroup probably in June to figure out what the next steps are with board governance work. But more to come on that. I just want to quick say thank you to the administration for mentioning the summer school option that was mentioned not only in SPAR but tonight. And I'm looking forward to some timeline for that. And the virtual academy, I just want to quick share that we know there are districts out there that are heavily advertising their virtual academies for the fall. And some other board members have shared that information with me. I think we're all cognizant of that. And I know the administration is definitely thinking about that. And that's something that has been shared from a high level. I look forward to a timeline and a detailed perspective of what that looks like. And also, if we could start advertising for that opportunity for the fall, knowing that that could save some of our students, help some of the families where they are not comfortable with their children coming into a school due to whatever underlying condition or safety, security issue. Again, it's just something that is needed, something that we've talked about, but it's pushed us to think about that sooner than later. So I just look forward to learning more about the virtual academy and how we can offer that as a solution for some of our students. And the last part is the board follow-up questions. And I have two outstanding items that I'm looking at. One is the ninth grade students, and I believe, Beth, that's still outstanding. You're working on that?
You will have all of that in board notes this week. So all of the data on those nine students.
Excellent. And the other follow-up board question that was remaining is member Berninski's wanting to receive an estimate on what it would cost if the district brought back in-house custodial staff. And I believe that was sent in board notes.
If it was, yes.
Okay. All right. So there are no other outstanding follow-up board questions. Do we have any today that we need to put for next time? Were there any questions that I did not write down for the administration to follow up on? Okay, I didn't think so. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. All right, we are at the adjournment part of the agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Member Kehoe?
Madam President, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by member Kehoe, seconded by member Brooks. We are at the end of our agenda. So we are officially adjourned at nine twenty-seven PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.